Let's call meeting back to order. Please. Next item on the agenda, item ten, under consensus items, item A, personnel, appendancy, Dr. Wells.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, would request the board approve the personnel matters as given?
Need for approval?
Second.
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Posed, approved. Item B, budget amendments, appendix F, Mary Hazel Small.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I request the board's approval of budget amendment number one, which is mostly comprised of carryover of unspent funds from the prior year.
Need for approval?
Second.
Comments, questions?
Just not related to that, since we're talking about budgets, the state looks like they're making some progress on the budget. I think I forwarded you guys some articles in the last couple of days related to that, so hopefully, cross your fingers, in two weeks, they can come to some kind of resolution.
Does that include driver's ed, you think?
The Senate version supposedly includes a proposal on driver's ed and teacher assistance that was favorable.
Oh, good.
So the House is looking at it and trying to decide if they're going to accept that compromise.
By the way, Mr. Chairman, that matter you asked me about at the cameras.
Oh, yes.
I have notified Senator Lee, I got a response saying he knew nothing about it, but that they would check on it.
And I couldn't find anything on it when I looked for it, so...
Yeah, I just...
What are you talking about?
There was a...
Well, what happened was I was at a function Saturday and I was talking to the mayor, and he said there's movement in the legislature to do away with red light cameras across the state. And he was talking to me about what a good... They serve a very good purpose here in New Hanover County, they do cut down on accidents, and the money does go to the school system, which we appreciate. And he said it is a way of being able to obtain additional funds for the school system without resorting to property taxes, and I think people appreciate that. So really, his comment to me was that we might want to check on that and maybe voice our concern. And I think if that is taking place, I would like to see us do a resolution of some type to send to the legislature, letting them know that, you know, if they... If other counties don't want that, fine, but if New Hanover County is pleased with what's taking place here, you know, we should be allowed to do that. You know, the local control in the matter would be what I would recommend to them. So it's something we just need to be on top of.
I move that we have our board attorney draw up a resolution for us to consider at our next meeting.
Supposedly, it's not happening. Nobody knows anything about it.
Let us do a little more research, see if we can find the actual bill.
Then we'll definitely...
I guess I don't make the motion then.
Okay, we'll have a motion in a second about the budget amendments. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It's approved. So you just want to wait on it, Ms. Kevin Oger?
Yes, I'm a little late.
All right, thank you. Item C, change of school assignments, appendix G, Dr. Holiday.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. These are routine releases that we're asking you to approve tonight of students whose parents are employed by neighboring school districts that would like to attend there.
Move for approval.
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, it's approved. Item eleven, under old business, item A, ACE's membership, appendix G, Dr. Holiday.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we've had a couple of changes today, and I'm going to ask Ms. Estep, who is the board representative on that, there are a couple of different names that need to be changed, and we're going to do that and ask you to amend that because of the changes just today. So Ms. Estep and I had a conversation about this at break, and she will make those changes.
Thank you, Dr. Holiday. The only changes on here are, there's one typo, not that important, but I would like to get the person's name right. Liz, it should be Liz Constantino, not Liz Contentino. And then there's one name that needs to come off, Courtney Graham, she has stepped down. All other names are fine.
So I'm asking, Mr. Chair, if you will accept the amended list that Ms. E... With all the names that are on this list and remove the name that Ms. Estep has indicated because that individual has stepped down today, and we'll make the minor cosmetic change in the actual name.
Okay. Is there a motion for that?
Move for approval as amended.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's approved. Item B, policies for second reading, Mrs. Nichols.
We have three policies for second reading. Two of them are new policies. Twenty-one fifteen has to do with preserving our official records. The second new policy is nine thousand two and its public relations and school communications. And both of those policies have procedures that the schools will certainly need to follow. And then the policy seventy forty, student promotion and accountability. And certainly, senior staff can answer any additional questions that we didn't pose at the first reading. If not, I'm asking...
You want to do all these at one time?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve all three?
So move.
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, they are approved. Thank you, Mrs. Nichols. Item C, officially naming the new elementary school. Dr. Markley.
All right. Our policy is that a naming of a facility, that there is a weight period, we have exceeded the weight period. So Porter's Neck Elementary School was the name that was chosen. There's been no comments again in opposition to that. So this time, I would ask the board to officially name the Northeast Elementary School to Porter's Neck Elementary School.
I move that we name it Porter's Neck Elementary School.
Second.
Comments, questions?
Yes. On here, we have the apostrophe, but if you look at the roadmap for Porter's Neck and most of those areas, they don't use the apostrophe, so we need to be consistent with...
I thought it was Porter's with just an S. I don't think it has, should have an apostrophe.
I don't think it should. I know that one organization there does use an apostrophe, but most of the road signs and all do not use it, so I think we need to be consistent.
Yeah, I don't think it has an apostrophe.
No.
All right, so it's Porter's Neck with no apostrophe.
Exactly, thank you.
Mr. Anderson, you got... No apostrophe.
That's right. I was thinking the same thing, how much we're going to save on that naming of the sign.
So a motion in a second, we didn't vote, did we?
No.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. One question I'd like to ask, Mr. Hans, is that would there be a road or whatever going from Edgeworth Club Road into the thing that we will have to name later?
There will be a road going in there, yes.
And then we do name those, like going into Holly Shelter, we named that.
Yes.
Okay.
There'll be an access road coming in.
Okay, and we could name that, correct? I mean, we usually do.
Absolutely.
Yeah, because I want to... I won't take up time with it right now, but I think most of you know that you were approached by gentlemen from the American Legion about naming the school after a young man from that area that was... Well, it was actually killed, he was murdered in Korea in the battle there, he was from that area. And there was a comments, and I can understand that wanting to name the school after this young man, and I just thought later I'll bring it up, it's something we can discuss. Then we might want to name the road going in there after this young man, just something we can discuss. Okay. Item twelve, under new business. Item A, strategic plan proposal, appendix J, Dr. Markley.
All right. Committee met, reviewed all of the proposals. Mr. Higgins, I appreciate you serving with us on that committee. After reviewing all of those, it was decided that the proposal that I think would best meet with the board wanted and fit within what we thought was our estimated budget was the one from Dash Consulting. So I would ask the board to approve Dash Consulting to do our strategic plan. I think her proposal is in there, and the cost was actually less than what we had budgeted for that.
Need for approval?
Second.
Comments, questions? How much was it?
I'm trying to scroll my way down there. I want to say it was seventeen, close to eighteen. Yes.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Six one. Item B, interlocal agreement for sales tax refunds, appendix K, Mr. Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a proposed agreement between the school board and the county for the purpose of allowing a refund on sales taxes that will be charged on the construction materials for the upcoming school bond construction projects. Under current law, the county can receive a full sales tax refund, but school boards only receive a partial sales tax refund. And under a procedure authorized by the North Carolina Department of Revenue, school boards are allowed to lease their school buildings to the county during the construction process, and therefore, the county can obtain the sales tax refunds, and then after the construction, the lease ends and the property remains owned by the school board. So this, that is the purpose of this agreement, and it would cover all projects that are going to be entered into with the school bond funds, which are listed on one of the attachments. It... There is one change that the county legal department asked to be made after this was posted, and it is in paragraph six B with regard to what the county does with the sales tax refunds. As written, the county would appropriate those to the school board to be used for construction projects as supplemental funding. The county legal department and county manager have asked that that be revised to give the county some flexibility as to what to do with those refund dollars. They could use them for such things as paying down the school bond debt. And I didn't get the specific language from the county on that, but if the school board is okay with that, you can approve it subject to that language being inserted as proposed by the county and as approved by me and the superintendent. If you would prefer to wait and see the actual language from the county, we could put this off and bring it back at a later agreement, at a later meeting for formal approval. But we do need to get this in place pretty soon because we have projects coming up, and the projects would need to be bid... They don't have to be bid in the name of the county, but the contracts with the contractor would need to be put in the name of the county in order to realize the full sales tax refund.
But in the past, didn't we do this, and then we determined, like other projects, maybe that didn't make it, got moved up, and we use this money, so now what they're saying that they want to make that determination is through the savings that would incur?
Yes, sir, the county wants discretion as to what to do with the refund dollars.
Mr. Hayes, can we put this on for the work session discussion, and then when we come to agreement, then it could be presented at the next board meeting? Could we vote on it then?
Sure.
We need to know and be able to talk more about it.
Sure. Yeah, okay, so we just want to... So we're just going to pull then item B?
Okay.
Okay, and then we have a work session coming up the...
I do have one question that I may ask. Does this include things like the construction at Hogard and Laney?
It should include everything that was on the list of approved projects with the school bonds. And if you look at the list attached, it just says Hogard and Laney High School, but it doesn't say, I assume that's, we're talking about the same thing.
So I mean, what they'd be asking for is a, for us to convey, at least temporarily, hopefully, Hogard and Laney to them, and we'd lease those schools back while the gyms are being built, or just the space that's under the gyms?
It's a little bit different than that. It used to be, when these interlocal agreements were entered into years ago, the North Carolina Department of Revenue was saying the school board actually has to deed ownership of the property to the county.
Okay.
And the school board would lease it back. And then after the construction was over, the county would deed the property back to the school board. More recently, the Department of Revenue has issued an interpretation saying that in order to take advantage of these refunds, the school boards don't actually have to deed the title to the county of the properties. The school board can just lease the properties to the county and then continue to use them, but then at the end of the construction, the lease ends, so the ownership remains in the name of the school board the entire time.
Okay.
Which is a simpler process and better from our perspective.
We never actually give up control under this method.
No, you don't give up ownership or control under this agreement.
All right, I just want to be clear about that.
Was rationale given for why they wanted to make this change at this time, and we haven't done it in the past?
The only explanation I received was that the county might want to use it to pay down bond debt or to avoid having to issue as much bond debt as quickly. And that, I can get further explanation, that's the only explanation I received so far.
Was that board action by the county or just communicated in...
That was just communicated to me, Mr. Schell, from the county legal department.
Okay.
And apparently, county finance had actually made the suggestion, but the communication came to me through the county legal.
We can ask directly from the county manager for more information as to why they want this.
And I guess they wouldn't do that unless they were basically told, you know?
Well, if I told Mary Hayes like that she could save some money, she would probably want to save the money, so sometimes the finance folks have a different view of...
Okay, so this we'll put off into the work session and we'll bring it back. Item C, school resource officers contract, appendix L, Dr. Holiday.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you know, our high school and middle school resource officers from the sheriff's department are now paid for by the county. And as you know, how they work that, that reduce allotment to us while they pay for it, so we don't have the contract for that because they supply it. As you recall, that's how that works. And our police department contract, we brought for the four officers in town a couple of months ago. This contract is for the eleven resource officers in our elementary schools that we were able to get funded mostly through a grant from the state. And this is not new, and you all know that, I'm just stating this for the benefit of the audience. This is something that we have been... The sheriff, as you recall, placed these officers in our schools after the Sandy Hook crisis a few years ago, and then the state made available some funding that we were able to take advantage of because we could do the match that a lot of places couldn't do. So this is not new, this is just a renewal of the continuing support that we have with those eleven resource officers that go between all of our elementary schools. And as you know, our principals feel very comfortable working with these folks, and it's been a very good relationship. They even get out and help us with traffic sometimes if they have to. So these are really good folks, and we have a great, like I said, a great relationship with the sheriff's department. And just asking that you approve this because we do have the money available for this to do, and these guys are already in place right now. The reason that the contract is coming so late is because, as you know, state funding is a little iffy because the budget... But we've been assured that this money is available, so that's why the contract is coming forward at this time. So I'm asking that you approve it.
We're so impressed with the leadership and supervision of what they operate also.
Absolutely. Couldn't live without it. As you know, we've been... Lieutenant Freelander and I are on speed dial each other, and we... If she doesn't call me during the day, I call her and say, "What's wrong? You don't love me anymore," or something, because we get a call about every day. So, been a good relationship.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved, and we appreciate the relationship. Item D, design consultant agreement for New Hanover High School, George West Building renovations, appendix L, Mr. Hans.
Yes, excuse me, yes, Mr. Chairman. Request that you approve the design consultant agreement for New Hanover High School.
Move for approval?
Second.
Questions?
Just, Bill, if you could talk in general what the renovations will mean to that utilization of that facility?
This is mainly, this is to the George West building. It did not get renovated when we renovated the main building back in the 1997 bond, so this is just affecting the George West building there in that area and renovating the classrooms and hallways and everything there.
So how many classrooms are involved?
I don't know, I'd have to get a count, unless Mr. Anderson knows, you know, the number of classrooms in a George West building?
Just approximate.
Probably a dozen high schools up there in the north of the science, the basic classrooms are...
Plus, what the band building's considered back there, and on the first floor, the graphics...
Yeah, the graphics shop.
My old chemistry class, where I almost failed chemistries upstairs. It needs some, it needs some help, it needed help then. There's a plaque where I almost failed chemistry in there.
It's a special item for nostalgia there that we've got in the contract.
For all posterity, right?
Yeah. Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved, thank you. Item F, design, excuse me, item A, design consultant agreement for College Park Elementary School replacement. Mr. Hans.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, request that you approve the design consultant agreement for College Park replacement.
Move for approval? Second.
Questions?
I do have one question. Noticing, design consultant for the replacement for College Park is 4.5 percent of the expected budget. Yet, the design, and I know we've already passed it, but I'm just asking, design consultant for the George West building was almost nine percent.
Difference in the scope and the size of the job. Because you have to do pretty much the same thing, but it's, the percentage comes out different. You have to do the same design type work and everything, but it's a difference in the scope of the job. This College Park job is much larger than the George West.
Oh, I understand that, but I mean, it's, the George West is about, well, I mean, this is, this is a whole school for just under twice what the George West building is.
It's a whole school, it's also, it's also a prototype school that we're putting there. We're putting...
Well, okay, I understand that too, okay. I just wondered, I just want to save some money there if I can.
Thank you.
We didn't vote, did we? Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Item F, design consultant agreement for Blair Elementary School replacement. Appendix L, Mr. Hans.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Request that you consider and approve the design consultant agreement for Blair.
Need for approval?
Second.
Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Item G, owner preferred brand alternates for Bradley Creek and Johnson HVAC projects, appendix P, Mr. Hans.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Request that you approve the owner approved brand alternates for Bradley Creek and Johnson HVAC projects.
Second.
Questions?
Owner preference, why? I'm just asking, why, instead of just bidding it, owner preference?
Well, we want to be able to bid the alternates and take them, take the alternates for standardization and compatibility with, so that the equipment is compatible and standardizing across the system.
That's already there?
Pardon?
It's already...
We have it, we have these, we have these systems throughout the, throughout the district, throughout the whole school district.
Oh, okay.
We want to standardize. We're standardizing on these, and so...
Okay, I mean, I just, I just wondered why you had a brand preference, that's all I was asking.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item H, North Carolina Education Lottery applications for 2015-16 capital construction projects, appendix Q, Mr. Hans.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Request that you approve the lottery applications for the various projects.
Move for approval?
Second.
Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Item I, utility easement agreement with Cape Fear Public Utility Authority at Laney High School, appendix R, Mr. Hans.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, request that you approve the easement for Cape Fear Public Utility Authority for Laney High School. They did pay us for this, $1,518.
Need for approval?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item J, North Carolina School Board Association Board Member Training Credit, appendix S. Ms. Adams has graciously typed up and researched all of the credits that board members can receive for activities that we've attended, whether it be all different types of conferences, because as everyone knows, we, by law, are supposed to receive 12 credit hours training yearly. And this is sheets that I think everyone received showing the various conferences or meetings or things we did locally that we could receive credit. That has been typed up, and it does require board approval.
Need for approval?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Item thirteen, we need a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 31811A3.
So move.
Second.
All those, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, we are in closed session.